We call to order the planning commission meeting for Thursday, August 17th, 2023. Please stand, remove your hats, and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Crowell, please call her up.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Heikle.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here. Thank you. All right, first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Casey, any additions? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Next, we have approval of our minutes from our July 20th, 2023 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Geisler, any corrections or additions? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
And the minutes are approved with one abstention. Commissioner Heikle. Our first order of new business this evening is planning case 23-16, use flexibility for Innovation Science and Technology Academy. Mr. Crowell.
All right, good evening, Commission. The item on our agenda tonight, the applicant is requesting approval of use flexibility for a public charter school. As you're probably aware, schools aren't currently permitted in our general commercial zoning district, but approval for use flexibility can allow a use that's not currently permitted. And this use flexibility is only used at properties that are in our River Rapids overlay district or in our port districts along Coon Rapids Boulevard. And so tonight, the applicant is looking at a space, Suite 3397, Coon Rapids Boulevard, and the Round Lake Shops Center. It's zoned general commercial and is in the River Rapids overlay district. Then there's the proposal for a public charter school. So Innovation Science and Technology Academy is a public charter school serving around 80 students from grades pre-K through 7th grade. I think in their original narrative, they said 6th grade, and then you'll see on the kind of floor plan that I have on there at 7th grade, I did confirm with the applicant it would be pre-K through 7th grade for the school. Their visions to create globally conscious student innovators, an ISTA was established in September 2019 in Brooklyn Park, and they're currently relocating to continue to serve the North Metro. And so they have, kind of the board of ISTA has been interested in an 8,700 square foot space in Round Lake Shops, this is kind of outlined here in the blue area. It was a former home of an office use and kind of call center for premier disability, and they had operated that space for about 10 years until they vacated, I believe, this year. So this is just kind of outlining the portion of Round Lake Shops that the school would occupy, and they're also proposing an outdoor play area on the portion of the parking lot. And so this yellow square is kind of giving you a general idea of where that play area would be. And then on this map, it's a little hard to see from here probably, but there's kind of little arrows, I just made a note, and how they would envision kind of school bus circulation on the site. So they kind of enter kind of on the southern end of the site, kind of follow the building, and then pick up and drop off would be at the front door of the building. So there wouldn't be students kind of running through the parking lot to get to a school bus and things like that, they're able to accommodate that right at their front door. Let's see, here's just an image kind of of that suite for reference, so they'd be kind of taking this west end of the building, and then here's a portion of that parking lot that I mentioned would be a proposed play area kind of in this corner over here. This again is just kind of to show you what was that kind of existing call center space, so they're kind of really only occupying about half of that space, and the other half would just, you know, kind of be sectioned off and leased for a future tenant there. So this area in blue is kind of where the school would locate. This was kind of a proposed floor plan layout, so it's all interior improvements, that would include classrooms, administrative offices, restrooms, a computer lab. It was noted that a storm shelter area was on here. Myself and our building official kind of walked this space beforehand just to try to understand what improvements might be needed. Kind of through that walkthrough, we originally thought that maybe needing a storm shelter was going to be required, and after kind of working with the state building official and kind of working through the process, they determined that a storm shelter wouldn't be needed there. So where it says shelter, it'll just be kind of the pre-K area on the site. So mainly utilizing existing offices in the space with some potential kind of wall build out for some additional classrooms in the space. And then, yeah, I think, mentioned the outdoor play area a couple of times, it would include a play structure and some kind of playground ground cover, so they're not just running on asphalt of the parking lot there. So with the use flexibility, there's kind of four criteria in our zoning code that you all are asked to kind of evaluate. You all are making a recommendation tonight, and the city council is kind of the final decision maker on the use flexibility. So I'm just going to kind of walk through each of the four items. I guess I'll maybe kind of note or preface with this as well, because they're just doing interior modifications to the building and they're not going to be expanding the building footprint in any way, that's kind of the reason why they're not going through a formal like site plan review, and they're not really needing to kind of be held to our River Rapids overlay design standards and things, it's all kind of interior space. Kind of typical in a lot of commercial space, when a restaurant or something leaves and another one kind of comes in, you know, they're just really going through a building permit process to do those interior renovations. So that would be kind of the case here. So I just made a note in the staff report, again, that tonight is really about the use flexibility piece, and if they would get approval of use flexibility, they'd have to go through a building permit process, and that would go through staff review, and that's where we can work with them on maybe some additional fencing or landscaping that could be provided on the site as well. So I guess I'll just give that caveat. And then kind of going into the four criteria, the first one is really relating to kind of some unique circumstances of the development as to why use flexibility could be helpful. The property owners did provide a narrative for Round Lake Shops, I think they've identified kind of shifting retail trends, that this site doesn't really operate as a neighborhood commercial retail center anymore, like maybe it did at the time it was built. And so kind of with that, they've since been having more like office type uses and service businesses in the space instead of maybe kind of traditional retail space that you would see. So kind of with that, staff and the property owner felt this kind of educational use kind of aligns with their kind of future vision for this building and the types of uses that they're likely to see here. Another point I would just consider, the site is adjacent to residential districts where education uses are permitted. It's kind of an isolated commercial center on the corner there, it's not like this is in Riverdale Village or some of our other retail centers, which is kind of really a big commercial area, this space is kind of a corner parcel surrounded by more residential And then I think another unique circumstance is it's probably less likely to see any kind of future commercial development in the surrounding area, so just kind of looking at adjacent properties. To the west here is U-Haul, that just kind of expanded their warehouse use is probably a pretty permanent tenant on that corner. To the east of the site is the WCCO tower that we're not aware of any plans in the future that that would be decommissioned and reused, so it's kind of big space there for the tower. And then to the south of the site is kind of a natural area with the community college there again, so a lot of the surrounding area is unlikely to see a lot of kind of development, let alone commercial development in the future. So looking at the second item related to kind of efficient organization of uses or gained efficiencies or public amenities, here again, like I mentioned, they're not doing a, oh, that's sorry, that's the second one. So again, they're going to utilize the west end of the building and kind of use adjacent space for the playground. Staff felt like there was enough parking and circulation on that site to accommodate the school use and for school bus kind of pick up and drop off on the site. And I think in general, we kind of treat schools as being a public amenity for the city. The third is related to kind of site amenities and buffers, so here again, they're providing a playground that could be seen as a site amenity, and we can work with the applicant on maybe opportunities for additional landscaping and screening. Like I mentioned, they're not doing really any exterior work, and so they're kind of exempt from some of the design standards and the code. And then finally, just ensuring that the use kind of advances the intent of the River Rapids overlay district and those port districts, and staff felt like the school kind of educational use is, can align with the intent for that overlay district. Typically, in the port nodes kind of along there, that's where you want to see more kind of mixed use, maybe a little bit more compact development, higher density, and then in these areas kind of between the nodes, like the Round Lake Shops is, you're going to see kind of lower density residential uses, some commercial and service uses that are supporting the broader nodes. So we felt like this use kind of aligned with that. So that's kind of the criteria that staff had laid out, and with that, we would recommend approval of the use flexibility for a public charter school use, and then like I mentioned, you all would make a recommendation tonight, and then that would go to the city council for a final decision. So happy to answer any questions you might have, I believe we have a couple representatives from the application as well, if that's helpful, and that's what I got.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Crowell?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Crowell, could you cover the question we talked about in the email as far as prohibited uses of other commercial?
Sure, yeah, I can do that. So yeah, one of our commissioners had asked if a school was to be located here, would that kind of bar any kind of future uses or businesses on that site, given maybe some proximity requirements related to public schools? And so what I would just note is that for any kind of future business licensing, if a school were here, no new tobacco or CBD or cannabinoid license would likely be issued here because those require 1,000 feet distance from a school use, which the site is pretty small, so no new licenses there. And while it's not officially adopted by the city council at this point yet, it's likely they're going to add that 1,000-foot distance requirement on the new cannabis licensing for the city, so no new cannabis businesses would likely be able to locate here. And then as well as adult-oriented businesses could not locate at the building with the school use. And then I did note there isn't an impact to the liquor licensing for Boulevard Bar and Grill or any kind of future liquor license. The only impact that could happen to Boulevard Bar and Grill is if they were ever interested in selling cannabinoids, like THC-infused drinks or something on their menu, they wouldn't be able to get that license because of that 1,000-foot proximity to a school. So that was some of the impacts or things if you want to think about that with the site.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell.
Yeah.
Was the bar then noticed to that effect?
Yeah, they were noticed, they were kind of given the standard public hearing notice that everyone within 350 feet of the property would receive, so they did receive that public notice, and I never heard anything from the owner at Boulevard Bar and Grill.
Any other questions for Mr. Crowell? Anything the petitioners would like to add? If so, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
Are questions just for you guys or for the public?
Right now, this is just the petitioners. We'll have a public hearing later.
Mr. Chair.
Anything the petitioners would like to add? Please give your name and address for the record.
Dan Hebert Gahn Companies, 56 East Broadway, Forest Lake, Minnesota. So representing the owner and landlord on this transaction. So do you have any questions for the landlord?
Just one quick one, how long has Premier been, how long since they moved out of there?
Great question. So they vacated May 2022, so they signed their lease 2012. And when they first initially signed their lease, they signed for about 5,000 square feet, and over time, they ended up occupying 17,000 square feet, and then they were sold as business, then they relocated to Brooklyn Park.
So a year, close to a year?
Yeah.
That you had to market the place?
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So what percentage of that retail space is occupied? Do you have a guess?
Of the whole center?
Yeah.
Probably, if I had to guess, probably 35%.
Is occupied?
Yes, so yeah, 65% vacant. And so I've been with this landlord for about 17 years or so, and so I came in when, 2006, when it was a gas station, there was a pawn shop, and I remember back in 2009 when the pawn shop was coming up for renewal, and he said two words to me, "You couldn't pay me enough to be here, you couldn't pay me to be here." And he's like, "No, no offense, but this is just a location where I can't be anymore, I need to be in Riverdale," and so he relocated to Riverdale. And so that was kind of the tale, and that's how it went from there on, and even, I mean, the city was a really big part of Premier Disability, that transaction. I think we even used some TIF dollars, because there's nothing happening at that time, to make it work. Premier guaranteed 40 jobs to the city, and then they, and the city through TIF gave some grant dollars, there was a clawback on that if they didn't upload, they're part of the bargain there, so. And then from that point in time, we just really never renewed any other retail tenant in that space. Not that we didn't want to, it's not that we didn't market to, but it just was no longer a viable, you know, classic retail tenant center.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikle.
So what, if a quote-unquote viable retail business came to the far end that's now vacant, would you lease to them?
Sure, I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah, as long as it didn't conflict with other uses within the center. And we've been approached by event centers, we've been approached by medical use centers, so still more service centers, as you recall, Family Pathways, they occupy the end cap, be kind of the southern end cap of the center, and through COVID, their mission and plan was to deploy medically challenged adults into the workforce, drive them to wherever their workforce was, and COVID destroyed that, and so that's why they moved on and never renewed their lease, for example. There was an autism group that took a look at that space, I don't know, probably a month ago, and so I would say, have we, have I received, toured, and talked with in-line retailers? No. We have about a million square feet of commercial real estate just throughout the whole market of the Twin Cities, about 300,000 of that is retail neighborhood centers. Most other neighborhood centers are full. I don't know if you're familiar with North Lake Shops, that's Shenegalee, that's, so that's, they're doing very well there. And even that is a little bit of a closet retail because we do have the daycare on the other end, but they've cohabitated now for probably five years, and it's good for both. So this is not, I mean, we're not the only ones, we're not the only owners that are going through this that had to reposition the real estate. And then another note is too, is that, you know, so this was built in 1987, and it's a little tired, but what that does, it affords, you know, the innovations of the world to afford rent there, because, you know, there's, it's just not a high rent-producing property, and so that's to their benefit. So we really see this as a win-win for them to grow an educational purpose on the site, and the landlord to, because, understand the landlords, this is a partnership with them too, because they're kind of planning on them to grow enrollment here as innovations starts to occupy and gets enrollment, so.
Commissioner, any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Does the size of the space allow for growth for them? Should they add more students, things like that?
It does.
It does.
Yep.
Are there any minimum requirements for the number of students that can be in the space?
I think we figured out, I think, because it's now, it would be classified as an E, and 300, I think, comes to mind.
300?
300.
For the size that it's currently at?
For the size it currently is, however, talking with innovations, they would max out capacity based on their operation and what they need, and the configuration, the space is about 135. Is that about right, about 135 students? Yeah, throughout 17,000 square feet.
Got it, thank you.
So 100, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikle.
So 105 students is what you're talking about, and then staff?
135, sorry.
135.
135, I'm sorry, and then staff and so forth.
Right. Now that would be with them taking the whole 17,000 square feet. So the idea here is as enrollment increases, they would take more space incrementally.
So you don't plan to lease the space next to that?
Well.
You're anticipating that they will grow?
That's the hope, and that's part of the investment here on both ends here. They see it as a growth opportunity, well, an opportunity to come and not take the entire space all at once, number one, so affordability for them, and number two, as they grow enrollment, they can take more space, they have an option for more space. Now, are we gonna, we will actively market the space, but, just for the landlord, but in case they, you know, growth is not coming or something, but we anticipate they are going to grow.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
And so, as the landlord, as far as the prohibitions of proximity to a school, do you feel any concerns about the fact that it's, you're no longer going to be able to lease to certain types of tenants because there will be a school on the entire property? Because as far as I'm aware, the ordinance as designed goes property corner to property corner, so the entire property is, it's not 250 feet or 1,000 feet from the school, it's the whole property.
Right, it's a tenure lease, and so we understand that. And I mean, you know, again, what are our options? Our options, you know, we could, I suppose, demo it and do a redevelopment, I suppose, but just ownership right now, life cycle of that property, appetite for redevelopment's not there, and so we decided to say, hey, if we can offer economical space, that doesn't take a lot of internal build-out, which is really not, it's best for both parties, and so we look at it like, say, okay, well, this is a good play. And so because it's a service center, we're pretty confident that we'll fill the rest of space with, there's mental health needs out there that we've been approached on different types of businesses like that, and so I'm not really concerned about it, nor is the landlord.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikle.
I noticed in your notes that, or some of the notes that we received, that the barber shop is going to be vacating?
Correct.
Is that going to be marketable?
Absolutely, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner, any other questions this time?
Chair Schwartz.
I have just a basic question for the petitioner. It's a silly question, but there's a point for me asking this question, but hours of operation are just going to be standard school hours, 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, not including holidays? Is that, is that a?
So I'll, maybe, do you want the school to come up and speak to? I guess they're kind of part of the petition, so.
They don't have to, unless, if you have the information.
Well, so if, they have mentioned some after-school services for kids, so to whatever extent that takes, goes from 3 to 5, do you have an outline of that perhaps? Amanda, whoever.
Like after-school programs?
Yeah, 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 and some summer programs too, is that correct? Summer programs, yeah, just to help utilize the entire calendar year as well as operating hours, and we don't have any restrictions on that, so. Come on up. Any more direct questions for me? I'm happy to stand up here too.
We may have more later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, and it's a privilege and honor to be here today, and.
Please speak up and I'll give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you so, it's a privilege and a great honor to be here today. It's very humbling to me, and in the sense that the buildings we have been in had been schooled before, so I now appreciate further what the first school did to make it a school building, so thank you so much for your time. And the school, like Mr. Dan said, the school is nonprofit, tuition-free, is owned by Minnesota Department of Education, is a charter school, school of choice. And what that means is, rather than the student being restricted to the school district, the state Department of Education established this to allow flexibility for parents to have that school of choice for their kid. So it's nonprofit, like I said, I just happen to have the privilege and the honor to be the director of the school. And then we have here also the board chair of the school, and the school is STEM-focused, and I think at this point, I will just listen to questions that you have for me.
Could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you so much. My name is Omotoke Olatoye, and the director of the school, Innovation Science and Technology Academy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We may have questions later for you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Any of the other petitioners would like to speak? We still have a public hearing coming, so.
You got tonight yet?
Yes.
Oh, here, good.
All right, at this time, we'll open a public hearing in planning case 23-16 for use flexibility for Innovation Science and Technology Academy. Please, if you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Paul Genalini, I've leased an space, another end of this strip mall, I own the State Farm Insurance Office there, I've been there for seven years, I've been on the Boulevard for 36 years, maybe people have seen my signs, I was next door to Lily Putt for many, many years, Stucco Building, tell you guys who developed that, and I got shown the door, so I moved on to Boulevard, so I've been on the Boulevard for 36 years. I agree, no retail's coming there, when this center was first built, I insured it years ago, and everybody's gone up to Northdale, no, the chance of any kind of retail's not going to happen. One thing I want to point out from the one gentleman, I think there might be a little bit of an error in this bus route, that they're going to come off of Coon Rapids Boulevard here.
Please stay at the microphone so they can hear you.
Yeah, and take that first turn in there, I take it every day, the turn lane is not designed to go in there, you gotta go down the corner. I believe that's illegal to turn in where they've got those yellow arrows going, so the city'd have to like, set the turn lane back a little more to allow that, you know what I'm saying? When you get to that entrance, that's not officially the chalk lines for a turn lane, you're going to have car accidents, buses are turning there, they could probably remedy that by simply starting to turn a little further back. So I just want to point that out, because I've been there for seven years, and yeah, the place is 35% occupied, when I've heard all this stuff, that's where I put my two cents in, I'm all for it, I'd encourage you to do the exception with, welcome having these people in the. And, yeah, the place is thirty-five percent occupied. When I've heard all this stuff, that's when I put my two cents in. I'm all for it. I'd encourage you to do the exception with welcoming these peoples and neighbors.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Doug Sluter. I live at one-one-five-two-two Quay, right directly behind the playground, about forty feet. I am not opposed to renting out space. I just know that that playground is gonna be right outside my door. And I'm gonna have noise, I'm just gonna have trouble sleeping. I work at, I get up at three in the morning to go to work. I go to bed sometimes before the school would close. I just foresee this particular location as being a problem for me and other people that live in the townhomes just directly behind that playground. And I know that there's another person that lives across the street from me that says that there's a lot of drug trafficking behind, in between that building and the townhomes, and that that might be an issue for the school. That's about all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing?
What was that?
No, I'm, thank you.
My name's Jeremy Howells. Live at three-three-nine-six Hundred Fifteenth Lane Northwest. What's not pictured here, a hundred and fifty feet behind that proposed building is my house, right outside this gentleman's house. I believe that's a retirement community relive. I live directly on that other side. Worried about bus traffic in and out there, and what it feels like is Boulevard Bar and Grill will be pushed out of those facilities. Lived in Coon Rapids for twenty-five years, bought a house to wanna stay in Coon Rapids. It seems like pushing Boulevard Bar and Grill out is a mistake in the situation. I cannot think of one non-chain restaurant in the city of Coon Rapids that I enjoy. I know it will cause havoc for them. And it seems like Boulevard Bar and Grill is the only decent renter in those facilities that has a big flow of traffic. With that proposed playground too, there's many motor vehicles that do travel through that place. And making that parking lot even smaller towards Pheasant Ridge Drive, I pose as an issue if we're gonna have a hundred and thirty students plus staff in there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Come to the microphone, give your name and address, please, for the record.
My name's Amanda Hoytia. I live in Coon Rapids on two-three-five-six Hundred Thirty-Fifth Lane. I have an interest in Innovation Academy, but I work for them as a volunteer. I have four children that are in the zoning for Anoka Hennepin School District. And my children were in Anoka Hennepin District, and it was not a good situation for them. We did apply with the district for an in-district transfer. I pleaded with them. We tried to make it work at the school we were at, and they denied us multiple times for an in-district transfer. And Anoka Hennepin is just a monstrous district that has a very stronghold on the surrounding area of Coon Rapids. So in order for us to be able to go outside of our home school, which was not working out for my children, we would have to leave the city of Coon Rapids. The closest district that we could get a transfer to, we wouldn't be able to get busing. That was in Spring Lake Park District. And in addition to that, there's just, there's nothing else nearby for elementary school-aged kids. Mine are all elementary, eleven and under. That is tuition-free. So originally, Innovation opened in Blaine, and so that is where we finally had a choice to be able to go to a tuition-free school without going a significant distance from our home. So I will say that the majority of my neighbors on my block don't send their kids to the local school that we are assigned to. Many of them have taken their kids to private schools or done transfers to other districts because they're not satisfied with the school choice that we have. And the district does not allow for in-district transfers, even when my child was being abused and bullied at school, and we had to take her out of there for her own safety and health. So I think that having a school come to Coon Rapids for for elementary, so that we can have a choice that's tuition-free, being that I have four children, it's not easy to afford a private school. So that's why I have put so much effort into supporting Innovation Academy being in Anoka County, because we need more than just Anoka Hennepin District. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at public hearing?
My name's John Barstow. I live at six-oh-five Hundred Thirty-Ninth Lane Northwest in Andover. I am the owner of Boulevard Bar and Grill. And I guess I'm just kinda a little bit concerned about parking and the bus traffic through there and hours of operation. I know I just left there to come to the meeting, and we probably have seventy-five percent of the parking filled right now. Probably something Dan and I can talk about as well, but I guess those are my concerns. Also, you know, are we gonna be able to, it sounds like it was addressed, but we're not gonna get removed or denied liquor licenses in the future, that kind of stuff. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Dan Hebert again. So I thought I'd just maybe answer your question. So when premier disability occupied seventeen thousand square feet, there was three hundred people in there, about three hundred. So I guess maybe we can talk about this too, John, but it seems like there's a daytime, nighttime use, which can work out. And so, maybe Doctor and then John, and we all can talk about that, what that looks like. We want safe bus traffic through there, safety for around the school, and all that kind of stuff, and for the neighbors. We wanna be good neighbors too. We wanna be conscious of people and adjoining properties next door. So anyhow. So I thought I'd just kind of throw that out there, that there was daytime use of three hundred cars there.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Omotoke Olatoye, four-five-four-one Villa Parkway, Unisie Egan, Minnesota five-five-one-two-two. I just wanted to add to the comment about the parking lot. Since I've been coming there, I noticed that the restaurant across, no car at all until eleven o'clock. And I said, wow, this is so quiet. Because we have other charter schools in shopping complexes, like Aspire Academy is also in the mall. We have many charter schools, the state-owned charter schools in the mall. So I said, oh, every day, oh, no car at all until eleven. And the school is from eight to three. So from eleven to that time, you only have very few of them. In the evening, yes, because I came from there to the meeting. In the evening, yes. But at that time, the hours when students are there, because the number of cars there, very minimal, and even till eleven, eleven o'clock, not a single one around there. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Say, Doctor, can you just talk a little bit about how much staff would be there that would pick up?
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry about that, yeah.
This is the public comment period time. We have questions we'll ask you, okay?
Thank you so much.
Anyone else wish to speak at the public hearing? Final call for the public hearing? And we will close the public hearing. Limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heigler.
Since the last kind of comments were about busing and parking, how many buses would be coming and going? I mean, with eighty students, I mean, they come from the surrounding areas, so I would assume that there would be multiple buses or transport vehicles coming and going through that lot.
Could we please have someone from the school come up to answer questions that we may have?
There would be just two buses initially.
Two buses a day?
Yep. So two in the morning and two in the afternoon. We have a lot of students in the Blaine-Coon Rapids area, so some also might be just dropped off by their parents.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So are they full-size school buses? Are they?
Right now, we're using the smaller buses, so not the big buses.
Okay. And so they drop off, I wanted to get an idea of the bus flow too, being as that's come up. What time of the day and what frequency? Like, is it stretched over an hour that they come, or?
Do you wanna come up with me?
And maybe you have to speak to the current location too, but just an idea of the.
I mean, it's gonna be, it's not gonna vary much from a typical traditional school or any other school, you know, like that thirty-minute to an hour in the morning to get the students there unloaded from the bus. The buses don't stay around in the morning after the kids get dropped off. The time that the bus is gonna be there longer is in the afternoon, waiting for the kids to come out, making sure all the children are accounted for before they get on the bus. But that shouldn't be more than an hour, I would think, right?
Yes, in fact, the drivers would not like to wait for one hour. So it should maybe maximum. But in the morning, like Ms. Amanda said, at the most time, because they're already dropping them. So they're not waiting for them. They brought them, they dropped them.
They would go directly into the school.
And then they have tier two. So some of those bus company, they need to go and pick other students from other schools.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmucke.
One more question. So two buses, twice per day, seems okay. The question I have though is with the additional traffic for parents who might be dropping off or picking up, right? So is there a plan too of managing that flow of traffic? And I'm thinking mainly the safety of them leaving the building, crossing, you know, the area to get to a parking area, right? If there's heavier traffic than business. So how many cars are we anticipating? And what is the plan for kind of managing that flow of traffic for a safety purpose?
Right. Do you know about how many parents are drop-offs?
Most of the time, the school is still new. It's a small school. I would say also minus seven, if not many cars at all from the parents.
So we can just say a dozen parents that are gonna be dropping off versus busing? And then what we are looking at is the bus drop-off spot is the main entrance, if you look at the picture. So behind where the buses are, we can have like a parent drop-off sign so the kids can just come up along the sidewalk and go directly in. And there are always teachers out there to get the kids and bring them to the door.
And if I can ask a follow-up to Mr. Croll then? Is there any concern with stacking? So if there was hypothetically a dozen cars in the area as you come in, if they're also coming in from Coon Rapids Boulevard, going in front of the existing businesses to wrap around, if there was a dozen cars there, is that going to be an issue? Especially for those businesses, if they're, if you're talking about the three o'clock timeframe, and there are patrons trying to get to and from those businesses, is there any concern with that traffic flow or volume?
Sure. Yeah, I guess on the staff side, it could be something we could look at more to see how exactly that might lay out. I mean, if there's a couple of cars back there and they're parked along the sidewalk, I guess I don't recall quite the width of the drive aisle there, but typically, there are enough for two-way traffic, and there's enough kind of openings in the parking lot for someone to kind of get around or go through the parking lot. So I would say as long as they're kind of in an orderly fashion and kind of parked along the building, I wouldn't have any have any concern, especially in the morning, because most of those businesses aren't open at that time. Or if they are, they're on the other end of the building.
Dakota, do you have a pointer? Sorry.
No, go ahead.
If you wanna use the mouse up there.
Okay. So there are two entrances here, one here, you can't see, and then another one here. And so perhaps we could designate parking for parent pickup parking here, so it's outside of the flow of the entrance and exit. So something we could talk about, Dakota?
Yeah, I think it's something through the building permit process that could be reviewed with the site plan and kind of addressed and come up with a plan. I don't know if it's something that needs to be figured out tonight or isn't related to the use flexibility, but definitely something I made a note of and would need to follow up on and have a plan with the building permit.
Yeah, that's a good question too. And if it ends up being we need to sign designated spots for pickup, then we can do that.
Yeah, we were thinking that nearby the playground side might be another option too, to have them come in that way, and that it could be a little bit safer over there.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heigler.
A follow-up on that. Are you going to have then designated staff parking? I was kind of thinking that that area would be for staff parking.
Perhaps, but you probably have thirty stalls in that upper quadrant there. There's plenty of parking. The staff parking could perhaps be on this end row here if there's ten staff, ten staff here. That way, they're out of the way of where the potential pickup parking could be. And then this entrance here could be, we could sign it if we need to sign it, parent pickup. And so, the circulation for the pickup could be here. And then there could be designated stalls here. That way, it's getting everyone away from the drive aisle here could be useful.
Mr. Chair, one more follow-up. So your school hours are eight to three.
Yes.
So this bus activity and parent drop-off activity would occur before eight?
It will occur, so very good, it will occur before eight because school is starting at eight.
I'm sorry. Would you step to the microphone so that might elevate your voice?
Yes. So you are very right. It will occur before eight, because school starts at eight. So the school bell is eight o'clock, yes.
Okay. Then, school is ending at three, and the bus has come to pick up. What are you anticipating for this after-school care? What hours that might?
The after-school program?
Yeah, or is that a daycare that operates? I was confused.
Sorry about that. We don't have a daycare. And the after-school program that we are running right now, it runs only on Friday. Fridays, because our Friday is half-day. Half-day, school closes at twelve every Friday. So twelve to one is when they have that after-school program that we have right now. But later, because we are partnering with Mert later, we could have, we could include this particular partnership to our twelve to one o'clock. Because the problem is, if we have it after school when they've gone, it's a problem for parents to pick up the kids. So we always have our after-school program every Friday from twelve to one. So it's still within the school.
Okay, so that gives me a better picture of it. It's not after. It's not after-school care, really. It's a programming.
We are not given the approval for that.
And then one other question I had. So essentially after three o'clock in the afternoon, your pickup, you know, given that half-hour period or whatever. So you're not gonna see much activity?
Oh, no, we're not gonna, we're not going to see, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I have one more question for Mr. Kroll. So that turn aisle off of Coon Rapids Boulevard that Mr. Gentolini talked about, is that something the city or the county has to address to make, to do a turn lane?
Yeah, it could be something we'd have to look at. I mean, if it's just one or two buses, like two times a day, I'm not terribly concerned. If, in fact, that does cause a concern, this was just kind of an example outline, I mean, they could enter off of Pheasant Ridge Road and kind of come down and loop through the parking lot to get to the entrance area. So I think there's some possibility there for the bus to kind of navigate that parking lot. But if, yeah, if it would become a concern, that would be something Anoka County and the city would just have to work on. But I don't know if it would trigger something, because it's just a bus or two at eight AM and then three PM.
And I have another question I wanted to mention. The neighborhood that backs up to that playground area, is this something can be, that can be addressed visually or with some kind of fencing or sound mitigation? You know, I don't know how close they are. It's so hard to see at the top of that map, but it's a concern. And I know when we talked about the daycare that operates out of the Chanticleer facility on Northdale there, that was a concern of their backdoor neighbors. What could be done to mitigate sound, visuals, you know? So again, you're looking at the permitting process. Is that something that can be addressed that way?
Yeah, so I guess what I didn't mention, with the playground equipment and like the play cover, it would be enclosed by, with a six-foot chain link fence that is gonna be like vinyl coated. So I understand that's not like necessarily a visual piece, but just want to mention like that will be enclosed, so like kids aren't just like running around in the parking lot or going into the neighboring property. They'll be kind of walked out of the building along the sidewalk into a fenced-in play area and supervised. But then with that, kind of behind the building there, there is kind of, and it's cut off in that photo, but there is a small kind of boulevard area that kind of separates the drive behind the building and then the driveway aisles of the townhomes. And so that could be something to look at, some additional landscaping there, potentially a privacy fence if that was needed. You know, I think it's something if the commission would like, it could be added as a condition. I know that's been done in projects past, kind of the recent Cedarwood is an example where there was kind of a privacy fence requested. So if that feels, if that makes the commission feel more comfortable, you'd have that option to add it as a condition. Otherwise, for sure, it'll be something that's looked at with the building permit and try to negotiate with the applicant.
Okay, and I don't even know the feedback we've ever had from that Chanticleer facility, you know, that daycare facility. I've never heard that there's been a problem, but maybe they address that just fine and hopefully this could be addressed the same way.
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Haigler.
I could probably comment on that, because that was, that's our project too, and so we came in front of you and asked that. And it's vinyl fencing over there, it's not chain link. But we really need to consider durability here with maybe a little older kids than just daycare age kids, which is why we chose chain link fence. However, there could be some screening that could be done on that north side to maybe mitigate some sound too.
I think that would be welcome in the neighborhood.
Yeah. What time of day would these kids be at the playground? Before, during, and after school? Is there a certain time, like recess time, is that, or there's?
Yeah, recess is done by class, so usually the recess is done by two.
So.
And then they don't start the recess until eleven. So it goes five by class, and it doesn't be every time to be there.
Yeah, so eleven to two, you have rotating, okay? Okay.
So eleven to two, the full school is on recess, or?
No, it's, no, they would do it in increments.
Class by class, grade by grade, when the teacher, just like on the schedule. The schedule, when they have the recess, then they go out to recess. They come back, then depending on which classes are scheduled for recess again. So they're not all going to be there the same.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering, because I'm wondering about the size of the playground area, you know?
It's about twenty-four by thirty-six, approximately.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Naval.
I have a question in regards to this recommendation and use flexibility is what we're discussing here for this public charter school. Now, I'm pro-charter school, I think it's a great addition. I'm also very pro-business and like with Boulevard Bar and Grill and any other businesses in that area. My question goes, I don't know if it goes to legal, to Mr. Guccion, Buccion, or to planner Crowell. The question is, if we approve the use flexibility for this charter school, will there be conditions? Or will it impact the supposed one-thousand-foot rule that you can have, it's like a no-gun zone or no-cannibally zone? I, if, my question is, does this use flexibility? Will it impact other businesses because if we approve a charter school in the area? Because I don't think it's proper that we interfere in commerce if it's, you know, impacting existing businesses who've been there already. Now, future businesses, I can understand that. But existing businesses, I don't think it's, that's my question.
Mr. Brucicoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Mr. Kroll outlined in his presentation briefly, as we understand it, it doesn't affect anybody that currently holds a license. However, the answer to your question is, it will absolutely restrict businesses in the future. It puts a school at a location that there isn't one already, and we have radius restrictions for, right now, the sale of THC edibles and things of that nature, which is an evolving industry, as we've talked about a little bit. As we move forward, before the city council currently, there isn't anything about time, place, and manner restrictions regarding the sale of marijuana within the city. However, we do anticipate that'll be a future topic for the council to consider. We don't know what they'll do. Additionally, there are time, place, and manner restrictions within the marijuana legislation itself about where marijuana businesses can be located. The only immediate thing that came to mind, as Mr. Kroll outlined in his presentation, was the Boulevard Bar and Grill currently does not sell anything that has THC within it. Frankly, there isn't any marijuana licensed beverages currently that they could sell anyway. It'd just be the hemp stuff. But in about eighteen months, products will come online that if they wanted to sell, they would be restricted from doing so under the statute as it currently sits, without even talking about the zoning ordinances. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, very good explanation. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Geisler.
Mr. Brucicoli, just to also clarify, there, it currently is not any prohibition as far as the sale of liquor within proximity to a school within the city?
Not that, yeah, not that I'm aware of.
We're both shooting from the hip here, but I don't recall any distance restriction from schools for sale of liquor.
So, but given that this is a general commercial property, if there was a future tenant, we could have a liquor store next to a school?
It depends.
It's a permitted use within the commercial space?
Without, I don't, you know how I feel about hypotheticals. It would largely depend on a couple of factors here. So, maybe, but as you know, we restrict the number of licenses in the city and things of that nature, and there's distance restrictions from one another and all of that. So I'd prefer Commissioner not to go down that road, if I can avoid it, because I think the legal is very gray on that one.
Thank you.
I have a question or two on the playground. Do you have the dimensions of what the playground would be?
Well, it's outlined in yellow.
Because you look at the picture that's on the screen and it shows rectangular, but you look at this floor plan picture and it shows square.
Yeah, so, right, and this is evolving a little bit, but the objective here would be a twenty-four by thirty-six. So it would be out from the building twenty-four feet and thirty-six from north to south.
All right. And as far as the fencing material, you said it was gonna be black chain link fencing. Would there be a possibility of using the vinyl slats that you slip in, chain link fencing, to somewhat screen it, which would block some sound?
So I think there's two things there. One is sound to the north. I think that could be accomplished. Secondly, you want the fencing area open to see the kids, to know what's going on, right? That's a really, it's a safety, right, concern. But I think to try to deflect the noise going to the neighbors, that's, we'll explore that. That's sound deflecting material, whatever that is. We just want to make it look good too, so it may be better, more efficient to do some sort of a vinyl fence behind in the boulevard there. Just not to mix maybe materials maybe and just keep it open for the kids, but we're willing to explore that, whatever thoughts and ideas Dakota may have or the city official.
All right, and then continuing on with my questions. There is no internal, and this is probably more a question for the school personnel. You don't have any kind of an indoor gymnasium of any kind. What do you do for FIAE classes?
I suppose we're Minnesota, so we, they go outside.
In the wintertime?
Don't kids still do that? I did.
No, they don't.
Really?
Not pre-K.
If it's cloudy, kids aren't going outside.
Well, we should do something about that, Wayne. We should get them out there.
No, I've got no control over it.
I know. We, they talked about that. And there are building conditions that have to be met in order to put playgrounds inside. That right now, it's not on the table to do. You have to build out a certain space, sprinklers and clear heights and things like that that may be down the road, but again, if it's down the road, there'd be a building permit pulled and then we'd have to adhere to the requirements, what the building codes say. But do you have a different response, Dr. O? No, okay. So outside, it is.
All right. Then my next question is, you're K through seventh grade. What about eighth grade? Because you can't go to high school till ninth grade. Where do your eighth graders go? Or once they graduate from seventh grade, where are your students going?
The school Innovation Academy was approved for pre-K to top by Minnesota Department of Education. So when it's approved like that, the school has the flexibility to grow the school as they feel successful for the student. So last year, we were pre-K to six. Now we're taking our sixth graders up to seven. And then next year, they move to eighth grade. Now, when we have pre-K to eighth grade, the plan is to stabilize it for a while, for many years, before thinking of the high school. So like I said, it's always a good thing to have that approval at the beginning, and then the school is left with the flexibility to make sure that the expansion benefits the student, because the main purpose of any school is to improve student learning, to improve academic achievement. So we'll try it, looking at the student data, looking at what we have, and then we expand gradually.
Then I guess if you're thinking of eventually adding on to, adding the eighth grade, I don't see on your floor plan where you would have space for your eighth grade class.
Will we have space for the eighth grade class? Because right now, what we have, we have sixty, most of the time. And that building will take a hundred and thirty-five. So even schools enrollment is very tough. Even schools that have been established for many years, they have been hundred. So even with the eighth grade, it's hard to get students at that grade level. So it's most likely we are moving our seventh graders, maybe we have one or two. So right now, our smaller classes are in the upper ones, because students love their friends, they want to stay with their friends. The lower ones are the ones school usually get. So I would love to see the school growing past one thirty-five. Based on experience, what I've seen with many schools, I think it takes a while to get there for each other's.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So, Mr. Kroll, you know, a lot of what we're discussing right now is revolving around the exterior improvements. And I know one of the staff findings was that there are no exterior improvements. But we're talking about traffic, we're talking about parking, we're talking about a playground, we're talking about landscaping, we're talking about noise buffering. What I'm hearing is, I think we need a site plan to actually discuss this. You know, from, there's the use flexibility portion, but at this point, I think to adequately meet the needs of, especially mitigate harmful potential effects of the area, we've heard that part of it is, there is a noise buffer, part of it is, there is a traffic flow. We have a couple ideas that we've discussed here, but none of that's in our packet, none of it's official, and it's not on a site plan. So at what point do we feel that a site plan with this would probably behoove this application to give us better guidance on the questions we've been asking?
Yeah, I guess kind of from our code really, what automatically requires a site plan is kind of related to, is it thirty-five percent or more of the existing site or building? And because they're just kind of occupying an existing space, I felt like it didn't really warrant a full site plan review. It's not necessarily, has to be held to our landscape standards and things kind of like any other kind of business that's going into an existing space. It's really just kind of a building permit review, lest they're doing a major expansion or kind of redevelopment of the site. And so I feel like, kind of what we are talking about, like is a site plan and what we're kind of discussing, but from like, I guess, the like code definition for site plan review, it felt like this didn't warrant that level of review. But there are things, like when we look at the building permit, we're looking at parking and circulation, and those are things that staff can address with the applicant. I don't know if Blair, you have other items you want to add?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, or Mr. Brucicoli.
Mr. Kroll's correct on the thirty-five percent requirement triggering the automatic site plan review. A couple points here, where within the sixty days, doesn't run till September eighteenth. I know the applicant is looking to get this started, but the commission could add conditions. I know the applicant is looking to get this started, but the commission could add conditions, even though it is not a site plan review. And it's important to remember, this is a recommendation for council. So, I think vetting some of the things here, that's the point of this body, and you could absolutely recommend conditions as well, if you wanted to. If, if it's something-
I can't hear you.
Sorry, Commissioner Hekel, I'm wandering a little bit. You could add conditions on your recommendation. You could have recommended conditions on your recommendation, things like that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Schmalki.
I guess I, in terms of trying to help come to a recommendation, is that, so let me, I, I guess I do have one question. Is there a bike rack? There's kids, I'm assuming some might be biking here, right? And so, you add that, you add the traffic flow, you add the concerns about the playground. There's certainly from a flex, or from a flexible use here. I guess it really does, I, I'm, I'm totally for, again, I think I love the idea of this type of school coming to Coon Rapids. I think it's, sounds like it, there's a need for it and that it would be beneficial. I'm not sure that this is the best location for it. And I'm not convinced of that, I'm really on the fence for that, because of the things that we've cited. So, it's, it has nothing, I'm, I'm less concerned about the interior. I think the interior, you know, you can move walls internally if you need to, so if they grow, if they change, I think that can be expanded or, you know, reconfigured, so I'm less concerned about that. But the safety of the kids and impact to other businesses with the flow of traffic, things like that. And I guess, you know, I, I did also take the time to think back of other locations where we have schools like this, right? And the one that was cited is over by Shanclaire, off of, that's Northdale Boulevard, correct? I think that is, North, Northdale Boulevard. And then I'm also thinking of, not in our area, but in Andover, close to the, the McDonald's there on Round Lake Boulevard and Bunker, there's a school there. I've actually never, ever, ever run into any traffic issues at that school. Again, I'm not usually there at, on a frequent basis, but I've, even during the school hours, I've never seen any issue with, with traffic and so forth. But the way that that one's laid out, it's longer, right? And I think that the flow probably does accommodate that one a little bit better. I don't know what has come out of the example next to Shanclaire, where, you know, because I know we did raise a lot of questions and concerns about the flow of traffic again there, and worry about kids running across the drive path and so forth. It would be good to know if we, if our decision to, you know, to proceed with that request, if, if we were, if we were good in that decision, or if there might be, and I know it's a difficult thing to answer too, I totally understand that, but if we had something to kind of go off of to say, here's examples, I'd probably, I'd probably sway differently, but I just feel like I'm not sure that this is the best location for this school. That's kind of where I'm sitting.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Public comment session is closed.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So, I, I am more aligned with Commissioner Schmalki on this one as well, but going to some specific points here, you know, as far as why we grant use flexibility, you know, it's necessary, necessary to unique standards of the development or unique conditions. There isn't anything really unique here. The market's changed, but the site itself is not unique. And the site will continue to operate as a commercial space unless, to what, what has been alluded to, we're saying, we don't want a restaurant there, we don't believe other parts of the business should be there, we don't believe that the, that the grocery store should be there. And what I'm hearing is, no, those, those will stay there, will stay as a commercial property space, because, but we're just gonna take a chunk of it off of commercial. So, I don't know that this is necessarily a unique space in that regard. I do understand that the world has changed a little bit there, so maybe it's not as viable as it could be. However, that is a grocery store that is effectively filling a food desert space. So, that's a pretty big deal. So, if that were to slowly shift away and no longer be commercial, that could create other problems with the city. From a negative impact or mitigating harmful effects, as we've talked about, there are potential limitations of future commercial viability of this space based on putting a school here. That is a harmful effect that cannot be mitigated based on how the code works. That's something we'd either accept or we don't. And as far as advancing the intent of the section, I mean, the point of the port districts is renovation ultimately. This, what I'm struggling a bit with, I do agree that a school is a viable, viable in the port district. I don't know that it's furthering the intent of renovation of the port districts to further its viability along the boulevard, which again, was the initial point of creating those port districts. You know, as far as integration of uses, it is an additional amenity. I agree, it is a good amenity. I do have concerns about the play space, especially in elementary school, play spaces is important. If you look at most of the schools that we have in the area, they have ample play space. The nearest park to here that has a full-size green space is a half mile away. You can't bring kids that far across, along a major road, that's pretty far to go. So, I do have concerns around a relatively small play space, especially as this school grows. If the plant, and again, we're making decisions for the long term here. That is another concern that I have of, is this an appropriate design? Which is again, why I come back to thinking more about a site plan of being able to understand and knock the rust off of a couple of these other questions. But given with what we have here, I have concerns that it would be an adequate amenity. I do believe that a school that does, serves this purpose is an amenity. So, I'm not trying to harsh, harsh that too much. I also think that there are mitigations, as the neighborhood has requested, that we would like to see more clearly outlined. Again, we can trust staff on that, but that would, I think at that point, now we're starting to make a laundry list of conditions that we would like to add or tack on top of this, understanding that the council's gonna take this and consider it after us and hopefully consider our comments as well. So, I, I, again, I am not sure that this is the right place for a school, but I think a school like this in the city would be great. There are other retail spaces that are thin right now, that have availability, that would be less conflicting with some of the other spots. But, yeah, it's, right now, I'm not sure that this is the right place for this school.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Navarro.
I think the, the use flexibility, it comes down to, do we want picking and choosing what kind of businesses are viable and not viable? This charter school is viable, it has been in operation, and not allowing it to work in this area, there's a lot of risk involved on the behalf of the landlord, the charter school, the families that are, are willing to commit and develop and put their time, resources into this facility. I disagree with some of the comments, and that's, you know, that's my right to have my viewpoint and opinion. But I'm, in regards to it, regardless of what city council decides, I think I'm pro for the charter school. And I think if the landlord and the applicant are, find it to be viable within their needs and the services that they're willing to provide and that their constituents are interested in, then I, I'm pro for this application.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I, I too am favoring this location. It might not be the ideal. I understand that, there's some drawbacks, but I feel like some of this can be addressed with staff input as the building permits are issued. I just, I, I don't think that we're, that we should be thumbs up or thumbs down on it other than to address the use flexibility. I feel like, I was thinking, maybe we need to add conditions, but I'm, I'm willing to put that in the hands of the staff, because they know our concerns. The council is gonna hear and maybe share some of these same concerns, but my inclination is not to pick and choose, but to address just the use flexibility and say this is a proper use for a public charter, and I, I would favor it also.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hekel.
I tend to agree with Commissioners Geisler and Schmalki regarding this. I think it's not necessarily the best use or the best place for this type of facility. I drove through, I sat in the parking lot and looked and watched the other day, and I drove around behind it, and I could see cars going behind it, and I could see cars parked, go in front of the market there. And there's, there's a lot to control for, for this school. So, I just really don't think it's the best, the way it is, the way it is right now, I don't think it's the best use, and I would tend to vote against it, or I will vote against it.
And my, my thoughts on the plan is, I tend to also agree with Commissioner Schmalki and Geisler for the most part. I don't believe the playground is large enough for this many kids. I'm concerned about sound mitigation to the townhomes to the north. And for those reasons alone, I will not be supporting this. Even though it's a, a good, a good purpose, it's, it's not a good fit for the particular neighborhood. Anyone else have a comment, or someone wants to make a motion, one way or the other?
Mr. Chair. If I may ask a question of the chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
If we were to have conditions on here addressing those concerns, would you, would that change your mind?
No, because the one main concern I have is the size of the playground, and unless it was greatly enlarged, I don't believe it's, it's enough for the size of the use.
Mr. Chair. Can I comment?
Go ahead.
Because I think it's important to determine how many kids at one time will be on the playground. It's not the whole sixty students. Keep that in mind. And number two, these are business decisions for the landlord. These are business decisions. You think we have not understood what was talked about here today? We have very much so. And we have to pay the bill. We pay property taxes. We've been in business for fifty-three years. We know what we're doing. This is a mission-based school. The, these kids' parents and their director will have absolutely the most safety conscience as possible. They would not look at this if they didn't, if they didn't consider those things. We wouldn't either. This is an opportunity for this community. Let's look beyond what's there. This is an end cap on a distressed piece of property. Do you wanna see it, vacate it any longer? I sure don't. We have property rights that we can exercise. So, we will look at this, and I would ask you to ask more questions about the playground, how many students are gonna be there? Because to make a, a statement that you don't think is big enough, we, we have walked this space with Dakota. He's taken time out of his day. The building officials take out of time out of his day. So was the fire marshal. They've been awesome to work with. You have an awesome staff. Please take these comments in consideration when you vote tonight. Thank you.
Do we have someone ready for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Casey.
In Planning Case twenty-three dash sixteen, I move that we recommend approval of use flexibility for a public charter school use.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Casey, seconded by Navarro. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I think the point that I'd just like to make around the playground is, the playground's twenty percent the size of a regular basketball court. So, when we're talking about middle schoolers, they play active sports, they need more space. You know, if this wa, if this was just a childcare facility that was pre-school, I think that playground size is one thing. Play is deeply important to the growth of kids. I, I, I know the educators know that, I know that there are ways to do that. I think, you know, we have a lot of spaces available for this, but I think we're expressing our concerns of what the amenity is going to provide the community, and it, it is a holistic space. So, that's all I'll say for that.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Navarro.
Uh, this school, charter school is Science and Technology Academy, correct?
Correct, yes.
I've been a science and computer geek all my life. The only exercise in gym I have is after-hours, and if I go to the gym. So, I, if that's a requirement of Department of Education with charter schools for the state of Minnesota, that's another issue. I don't, I don't consider that to be viable or critical, the size of the physical facilities. A charter school is supposed to be specialized to their clientele and the services and the education that they're providing and their mission. And if they meet the requirements of the Department of Education from Minnesota, in regards to their program and their facility, if there's a requirement from the Department of Education that grants them the right to practice as a charter school, I think it's irrespective, it's not of interest. The mission of the charter school is all that I'm concerned of, and the use flexibility. And I think it's a good use. And I think without a site plan, I don't consider it, I need more information to make a decision. And if there's permits and a, and a design plan of the facility, more than just concept in the application here, then I think that's something worthy to have a further discussion about. But in the meantime, the use, issue of use flexibility for this charter school, I'm pro for it, and I think that should be the focus, in my view.
Anyone else have discussion? Are there none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, if I have it correct, it was Commissioners Casey and Navarro in favor, and Commissioners Geisler, Schmalki, Hekel, and Schwartz opposed. Am I correct? Motion does not pass.
Chair Schwartz, this is a preference of the body, but we've had this before, where right now, you don't have a motion that would be going to city council. You just have a motion that failed. So, if you wanted to entertain an additional motion the other way, you certainly could do that. Or it could move forward, and council obviously watches these meetings and knows the concerns.
All right. With that in mind, is someone on the may side wish to make a motion opposing the plan for the evening?
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Thank you. I would make a motion that we do not recommend use flexibility for a public charter school use in Planning Case twenty-three sixteen, based on the fact- public charter school use in Planning Case twenty-three sixteen, based on the fact that the plan provided to us lacks sufficient buffers to mitigate the harmful effects of the, of the institution entering that space.
I'll second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmalki.
Can I make a suggestion on wording? Instead of say, do not recommend approval, just say, deny.
Recommend denial.
Yeah, just-
Deny.
Recommend-
Deny the recommendation?
Mr. Chair, I would like to amend my motion to say, recommend denial of use flexibility in Planning Case twenty-three sixteen.
Second.
Based on the previous statement.
All right, we have a motion by Geisler, second by Schmalki. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And the motion passes, with Commissioners Geisler, Schmalki, Heckel, and Schwartz in favor. Commissioners Casey and Knoblauch opposed. This is a decision of the planning commission, recommendation by the planning commission, and we'll go to the city council for the September fifth meeting. All right. Other business? Mr. Kroll.
Yeah, so next month, we'll have a site plan review for a multi-tenant retail space proposal on Coon Rapids Boulevard, where there's currently a vacant gas station and car wash. This would be a redevelopment of that site. And then there's a conditional use permit for a new auto detailing business in the Coon Rapids Tech Center.
That, is that thirty-fifty?
Nope. This is that new building on Eagle Street and Northdale Boulevard.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, that kind of Coon Rapids Tech Center, I think is what they're calling it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Crash from the-
Little bit.
That Mary T property.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. And the gentleman that runs the kind of propane business, yeah, yep.
Okay.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner, Knoblauch.
Question for Mr. Kroll. Any ETA on the, between Schneiderman's and Dick's, the development of the salon, I guess, or the, the service building?
Oh, sure.
Is there any progress? I see a lot of progress, but I'm just wondering if there's any updates to that?
Yeah, I haven't gotten any updates, other than they just, they have all of their building permits approved to run that construction. Our building official is kind of more in touch with them at this point on inspections or checking progress on the construction. But I haven't been made aware of any issues, and I think they're still on track on their construction progress.
Thank you.
Did they, they give you an opening date, or no?
I'm not aware of one, no. Yeah, sorry.
I think they're still pretty far away from an opening.
Yeah, I don't know. I think the whole building shell is done, so it might just be more the interior renovation, or kind of construction.
There's a lot of interior work on those buildings.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot of segmenting out into different studio spaces, yeah, yep.
All right, anyone else with anything for other business?
Mr. Kroll, we had the Astor location opened, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, they've begun leasing, I think, even last month, but then they held a grand opening event this past week, and I know Matt Brown was in attendance there. So yeah, they're open, they're leasing. I don't know what percentage that they've leased out, but I know some people are already moved in there and living there, so.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Heckel, second by Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.